All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 11, 2024 Borough Council Meeting. Tonight, we are conducting the monthly council meeting both in person and virtually. We're glad that you've joined us tonight for this meeting. During the public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand virtually, and a member of our staff will unmute your microphone, announce your name, and you'll be able to make your comment to council. We will start with members of the public who are hearing to council chambers with us tonight and then move to those joining us remotely. We will have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning and one towards the end. Participation is limited to once per a public participation session. We do ask that you keep your comments to under three minutes. Thank you again. We'll be starting the meeting now. So if you will join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. And with that, can we start with our roll call? Ms. Berkeley?
President.
Mr. Carmonito?
President.
Ms. Dugan? Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Strunfeld?
Here.
Mr. Weiss?
President.
Mr. Ewell?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Here.
Manager, Assistant Chief Solicitor here. You have a call.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Dugan is absent excuse tonight. She's just not feeling 100%. So we wish her well. With that, we'll move immediately into presentations. Tonight, we have a special presentation by Mayor Urschler and Police Chief Marshall.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for being here with us today. Certainly, we are very honored every day to work with an incredible group of not only police officers but first responders here in the borough of Phoenixville. And it's always such a great honor to have the opportunity when we are able to really commend and highlight the great work that our officers do. And so tonight, we have a very, very special award that we want to present. And with that, I will turn it over to Chief Marshall for the purposes of presenting a life-saving award.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Officer Karpovich, can you step forward? The mayor. This is a letter of commendation for a life-saving award. Phoenixville Police Department believes in the recognition of officers, their actions, and outstanding efforts in service to our community and their fellow officers. In keeping with this belief, I commend you for outstanding effort you displayed during the past week. On June 6, 2024, you responded to an emotionally distraught person that wanted to jump off the Veterans Memorial High Bridge. As you arrived, the person was already sitting on the protective wall with both legs on the roadside. As you were building rapport, the person then swung one leg over the edge and began looking over the wall to the street below. You seized this opportunity of momentary distraction by grabbing the man in crisis and then safely brought him off the wall. You and your colleague, Corporal Dutchenawski, safely sat the subject on the curb, where you then sat down next to him and continued with dialogue. The person admitted that he planned a suicide and wanted to jump. You took your time. You listened carefully and responded with words of compassion. The person in crisis then agreed to be transported in ambulance to receive medical treatment at Phoenixville Hospital. Your quick response, recognition of the severity of the emergency, and immediate action resulted directly in saving a member of our community from serious injury or death. The saving of a life is among the most admirable acts an officer can perform. Initiative, courage, and respect for human life demonstrated by you on June 6 is absolutely worthy of this life-saving award. The Phoenixville Police Department strives for excellence when serving the members of our community. Officer Peter Karpovich, thank you for your service and congratulations.
And Officer Karpovich, we are honored to present you with the life-saving award and also your bar.
Thank you.
So thank you so much. Certainly, do you have any comments?
No, I'm all right.
Okay. Certainly, you know, we're very fortunate, as we often say here in the community, to have such extraordinary police officers and first responders. You know, our police officers who have gathered here in the room, thank you. Thank you, Officer Karpovich. This is always an extraordinary opportunity for us to celebrate just the incredible work that our police officers do here in our community, responding to over 13,000 calls a year. It's always fortunate. They are there on probably the worst day of many people's lives, but also they can be there on the best day, too. And so, and with every opportunity, they bring dignity and respect and honor. And so, we are grateful for that and for all of their contributions. So thank you.
Thanks.
And we'll resume our agenda in just a moment. We're going to let our officers leave to take some photos. That was everybody in the room. Well deserved. All right. Next up, we have our annual audit presentation presented by Mally. I believe Dale is joining us remotely. Dale, are you?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can.
All right.
Let's go over to Dale.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dale Abenhauer. I am the Audit Principal on the Engagement for the Borough's Annual Audit. I'm going to do a presentation tonight, and then I'll entertain some questions if there are any. So I'll go ahead and get started. First thing I want to show is our Independent Auditors' Report. Now, is everyone able to see this okay, or do I need to make it a little bigger?
A little bit bigger would be better, if you can max that out a little bit.
I'm going to have to stop sharing so I can get to the thing. Is that better?
Yes.
Perfect. So this is our Independent Auditors' Report. This basically is our opinion on the financial statements. And what says is the very first paragraphs you see here is our opinion. And the first paragraph says that we've audited financial statements. Second paragraph says, in our opinion, the accompanying statements are presented fairly in all material respects. So that's what's called the unmodified or clean opinion. And then we go through what our basis for the opinion. Then we talk about the responsibilities of management for the financial statements. And then we talk about what our responsibilities are for the audit of the financial statements. Then we talk about the required supplementary information and the supplementary information. And that's the extent of our opinion. The next schedule I have here is the Statement of Net Position. This is broken down between governmental activities and business-type activities. The first column is the governmental activities, and that's what's based off of the governmental funds. So we had cash and cash equivalents of $20,621,685, AR net of allowances of $524,0693, internal balances of $848,057, prepaid expenses of about $7,900. We had land of $3,882,215, construction in progress of $1,354,695. And then we had other capital assets, net of accumulated depreciation of $37,885,681, giving us total assets for the year of $63,428,902. We had some deferred outflows of resources related to pensions, OPEB, and the bond refunding. Those total $3,713,811. Then we have our liability section. So we had accounts payable and accrued expenses of $1,100,629. We had unearned revenues of $1,855,399, which is your ARPA funding. We had accrued interest of $18,000. We had bonds payable short-term of $696,505, bond premiums of $81,128. And then our portions due are payable after one year. We had bonds payable of $18,971,701, bond premiums of $1,432,047, compensated absences of $752,533. The net pension liability for all the plans is $1,022,039. And then our OPEB liability is $1,804,417. We had some deferred inflows related to pensions and OPEB of $1,823,672, giving us net position of $37,583,959. That's broken down by $22,082,916 being invested in capital assets, $8,593,989, which is restricted, and then the remaining is unrestricted. Business-type activities, we had cash and cash equivalents of $14,101,924, accounts receivable net of $1,634,96, the internal balances of $848,057. We had inventories of $157,316, some prepaid items of $4,000. And then we had land of $346,855, construction in progress of $8,390,254, and other capital assets, net of accumulated depreciation of $29,754,607. We also had some deferred outflows of resources related to pensions and OPEB of $615,004. Then we had our accounts payable and accrued expenses of $219,585, unearned revenues of $15,071, accrued interest of $26,777. And then our long-term liabilities broken down between the short-term of bonds payable of $553,495, bond premiums $71,460, bonds payable long-term $1,828,299, bond premiums $250,013, compensated absences of $197,365. The net pension liability for the business-type activities was $268,432, and the OPEB liability was $323,972. We had deferred inflows of resources related to pensions and OPEB of $357,844, leaving us with net position of $51,736,247, of which $35,788,349 is invested in capital assets. The next page here shows the Statement of Activities for the Government-Wide. Again, this is broken down between governmental and business-type. But at the top, it starts with expenses on the left and then goes to the right for the revenues. So we had governmental activities, expenses of $15,45,0538. We had business-type activities, expenses of $9,553,917. And you can see the break out there between the Water Fund, the Sewer Fund, the Parking Fund, and the Sanitation Fund. We had charges for services on the governmental activities of $2,113,614. We had operating grants and contributions of $4,461,807, and capital grants and contributions of $486,852. For the business-type activities, we had charges for services of $11,476,554, operating grants and contributions of $68,107, and capital grants and contributions of $650,000. And this page shows the general revenues at the bottom here. I'm sorry, it's broken down between two pages, and I tried to make this side-by-side, and it wouldn't work. So the first three numbers here are our taxes. This is our property taxes, then our franchise fees, and then our public services taxes. The rest of this is broken down between fees and fines, grants and contributions that are not restricted to state programs, unrestricted investment earnings, and then miscellaneous. We also had a gain on the sale of capital assets in the business-type activities of $12,650. That gave us a net change in net position for the year on the governmental activities of $5,152,514, and on the business-type activities, $2,725,439. This is the balance sheet for the governmental funds. So this is broken down by the governmental funds, starting with the General Fund, which is the borough's main fund. We had total assets of $16,471,800. We had total liabilities of $3,778,84. We had some deferred inflows of resources of $148,581. And then our fund balance broken down between non-spendable, restricted, committed, and assigned. Our unassigned is $4,859,829, giving us total fund balance for the year of $12,552,335. The FIRE Fund, total assets of $1,137,09, total liabilities $15,693, total fund balance of $1,115,016. Our other governmental funds, which is the non-major funds, have total assets of $3,551,859, total liabilities of $17,508, a total fund balance of $3,534,351. And in a later slide, I'll show you the breakout of those amounts. The next page here, this is a reconciliation that gets us between the government-wide financial statements and the governmental fund financial statements. The government-wide financial statements are based on full accrual, and the governmental funds are based only on current resources. This takes our governmental fund balances, adds back the land, construction in progress, and capital assets. It takes the deferred inflows and outflows and then all the OPEB liabilities, net pension liabilities, to get us to the net position of the governmental activities. The next page is our income statement for the fund-level statements. So the General Fund had total revenues of $15,758,357, total expenditures of $12,345,902. That gave us an excess of revenues over expenditures of $3,412,455. We had some income from sale of fixed assets, and then we had an interfund transfer out of $666,488, giving us a net change in fund balance for the year of a positive $2,777,578. The FIRE Fund had total revenues of $2,274,396, total expenditures of $1,405,080, giving us an excess of revenues over expenditures of $869,316. We also had asset sales in the FIRE Fund and interfund transfers out of $348,418, gave us a positive change for the year of $599,809. The other governmental funds had total revenues of $2,936,400, total expenditures of $3,975,617, giving us a deficiency of revenues over expenditures of $1,039,217. That was made up by interfund transfers in of $1,363,724. And then we had some transfers out of $348,818, giving us a change for the year of a negative $24,311. This is the balance sheet for the proprietary funds. This is just the roll-up of the first schedule that I went over, so I'm not going to go over this because I've already gone over the numbers in detail for the total. This is our fiduciary fund. So this is broken down between the pension funds and then the custodial funds. So our pension funds have a total assets of $34,454,156, and that was all restricted for pensions. The custodial funds had total assets of $543,897, all of which is restricted for custodial purposes. The next page is the Statement of Changes in Fiduciary Net Position. So this shows all the ins and outs for the year. We had total contributions to the pension plans of $902,415. We had total investment income of $4,471,521, giving us total additions for the year of $5,373,936. That was offset by deductions of $1,305,689, giving us a positive change in net position for the year of $4,68,247. The custodial funds had developer contributions of $1,5438. And then we had return of escrow payments of $1,335,297, giving us a net change of negative $284,859 for the year. The next footnote, I'm going to go over the footnote for deposits and investments. I want to point out here that at the end of the year, the carrying amount of the borough's deposits was $35,753,895 in total. Bank balance was $36,294,496. $755,154 of that was covered by FDIC insurance, and the rest was covered by Act 72, which states that banks that hold public deposits must also hold securities to cover those public deposits in case the bank would fail. The borough would not lose any of its money. $172,104 of the borough's deposits is in the Picket Program, which are similar to mutual funds. Next one I want to point out is long-term debt. We have the roll-forward of the long-term liability activity for the year here. So our balance at January 1, 2023 was $27,542,532. We had some additions in the compensated absences column, and then we had some retirements for the debt, pension, and OPEB. And the pension and OPEB changes are just the change in the liability for the year that we actuarially provided. That was a negative $2,796,24, leaving us with $24,763,70 at the end of the year, of which $777,633 is due within 2024. The business-type activities, we started with total debt of $4,563,689. We retired $1,075,53, leaving us with $3,493,136, of which $624,955 is due within the next year. I'm going to go over the pension and roll-forwards now. So this is the police pension plan, and this is the roll-forward of the liability from the prior year. So in the prior year, our liability was $920,197. We had our service costs, interest, and all of our other changes for the year, and we end with a liability of $265,529. What that did was it lowered the liability by $654,668. Here's the same information for the non-uniform plan. So the non-uniform plan, December 31, 2022, had a liability of $2,391,64. Activities for the year led to a decrease in that liability of $1,365,222, leaving us with a liability at the end of the year of $1,024,942. The OPEB plan started with a liability of $2,634,38. Our service activities for the year changed that by a negative $502,049, leaving us with an OPEB liability at the end of the year of $2,128,389. This is our General Fund budget actual schedule. So we have here the original budget, the final budget, the actual amounts, and then the variance. So our original budget revenues were $10,230,735. Our final budgeted revenues were $10,318,435. Our actual revenues were $15,758,357, for a positive budget variance of $5,439,922. Our original budgeted expenditures were $9,988,313. Our final budgeted expenditures were $12,266,731. Our actual expenditures were $12,345,902, giving us a negative budget variance of $79,121. That gave us a budget variance for the year of $5,367,51 to the good. We originally budgeted a negative $181,702 for other financing sources and uses. That was the same in our final budget, and the actual amounts came in at $634,877. That gave us a variance for the year of $453,175. As I said earlier, when I went over the other governmental funds columns, that I would go over the combining schedules. So these are the funds that make up the other governmental funds. These are the non-major funds. So the Liquid Fuels Fund had total assets of $1,131,40. All of that was total fund balance. There were no liabilities. The Debt Service Fund had $103,058, no liabilities. So we have fund balance of $103,058. The Recreation Fund had total assets of $2,158,497, liabilities of $17,508, fund balance of $2,140,989. The Pension Fund had assets of $160,164, all of which was fund balance. Next schedules are the pension combining schedules. So this is broken down between the non-uniform and the police pension funds. So the non-uniform plan had total assets of $15,492, all of which was restricted for pensions. The police pension fund had total assets of $19,453,664, all of which was restricted for pensions. Here we have the breakout of the fiduciary fund contributions. So the non-uniform plan had contributions of $553,589, net investment income of $1,955,62 for total additions of $2,504,151. We had deductions of benefits and administrative expenses of $724,901, giving us a positive change in the year of $1,779,250. The police plan had total contributions of $348,826, net investment income of $2,520,959, giving us total additions for the year of $2,869,785. The deductions were $580,788, giving us a positive change in net position of $2,288,997. That concludes the presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments from council? There will be a quiz, so... No questions from council tonight, Dale, so?
All right.
Okay. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, Dale. Would that move on to Item C of Under Presentations, which is the motion to accept the 2023 audit as presented? Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to accept the 2023 audit as presented.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. All right. With that, we'll open up our first round of public participation. For those joining us before, from the beginning of the meeting, if you're joining us remotely, please raise your hand digitally. A member of our staff will unmute you, announce your name, and allow you to make comment to council and the public. Anybody joining us here in council chambers, if you want to make your way up to the podium, there's a sign-in sheet. We just ask that you provide your name and whether you're a business owner, resident or other. So any public comment tonight, real or virtual? Okay. We'll close the first round of public participation. If I missed anybody, there is a second round towards the end of the agenda tonight. One point of order, a little bit of housekeeping. Immediately before this evening's council meeting, council met in executive session. The purpose of this was to have attorney-client privileged advice and discussion related to Phoenixville Hospital LLC's real estate tax assessment appeals. It was also to discuss, have attorney-client privileged advice and discussion related to litigation, related to 100 School Lane. And finally, it was to discuss matters of personnel related to the police department. So that was immediately prior to tonight's meeting. With that covered, we will now move on to the consent agenda. In your agenda packet, there are Items A through, it's like A through D. Any items in tonight's consent agenda that needs to be questioned, removed, placed further in the agenda? Any issues on tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the current consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion for accepting the consent agenda? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to Section 6 of tonight's agenda, we have communications and council participation. Any updates from our council tonight, or correspondence or otherwise? Ms. Berkeley?
I just wanted to thank staff, our Streets Department, our Public Works, Parks and Rec. We had a very successful, our first responders, the fire and police. We had a very successful Dogwood and celebrations of our 175th, a huge parade. It takes a lot. And having involved in this from many different angles, this was probably the most easeful, and that is because of the outstanding work that our staff does. So I just wanted to thank everyone for that. Many of us were in town on Saturday leading up to Pride. We had lots of preparations. The Alliance was out painting the Saturday before. And everyone, again, just wonderful job. And everyone, again, just wonderful job. But we are very, very fortunate to have wonderful staff that support our community and a wonderful community that really comes together and embraces everyone. So just really positive things coming out of what we're doing and all the hard work that goes into it.
Okay. Any other council updates? Seeing none, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for those who are joining us here in the room and those who have joined us virtually. Just a couple of updates from this last month. We do want to wish the Phoenixville Area Senior Center a very happy anniversary for their forty-fifth, their forty-fifth anniversary, which took place last month. As Ms. Berkeley said, we did have an extraordinary Dogwood Festival. A big congratulations to the Phoenixville J.C.s and all of the organizations that were involved, as well as the Phoenixville Fire Company, who really helped to create a robust parade for the celebration of their hundred and fiftieth anniversary. And then, of course, you know, with the undertones of us celebrating our hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. So it was just a really great celebration for all. Congratulations also to Partners Creating Community for their grand opening, which they held on Dogwood Weekend. And that is the Two Sixty Bridge Cafe. If you haven't been, I'd say get there early. They always have a line going out the door. Very good and just a great organization and a great business and storefront to have within our community. A very special thank you to a large group of people from Phoenixville, as well as other areas of Chester County, who went to visit our state representatives to discuss affordable housing in Harrisburg. Also, a shout out to the Kiwanis Club of Phoenixville for their extraordinary Patriotic Day celebration, which they bring together students from all of our elementary schools. Also, a big shout out to our Public Works Department for helping to make that possible. We, Kate's Casa had a great year-end event, and I just wanted to give a very special shout out. They had a lot of great participation between Kate's Casa, Crescendo, and then Enfamilia. Also, a very large showing in the Dogwood Parade, and it was just absolutely spectacular to see these organizations come together and share their diverse foods and culture with our community. And so very, very exciting to see them all celebrating together. We did have, if you're familiar with the old thrift shop that the hospital had occupied, Kuntao Martial Arts actually moved there, and it is a, an Asian-based martial arts program, specifically Filipino, just a shout out to the Philippines. But that's currently on Church Street. They had their open house, and so just another great organization right here in Phoenixville. They, they've been here for a number of years, but now have a much more visible space. So if anyone's interested, we'd encourage you to go and check it out. Big congratulations to all the students for their promotion ceremonies, for their transitions from eighth grade into sixth, oh, eighth grade into ninth grade, and also for graduation. And so we want to wish all of our students in the Phoenixville School District and all of the students who live in the Phoenixville area and region, we want to wish you the very best. We hope that you have a wonderful and safe summer, and we can't wait to see you when school comes back into session. We want to give a very special shout out to our Congresswoman Chrissy Houlihan, who came to visit us last Friday to discuss a variety of issues with members of our LGBTQIA community, as well as the LGBTQ Equality Alliance of Chester County. And then, as Councilwoman Berkeley said, we had an extraordinary Pride this last weekend. Thank you to all those who participated and came out to show their support within our community. And we were also very fortunate to have a number of incredible visitors. Senator Carolyn Comida from our state senator, our state Senator Katie Muth, State Representative Danielle Freelauten, State Representative Paul Freel, County Commissioner Marion Moskowitz. I apologize if I missed anybody, but we also were very fortunate to host. Our U.S. Senator Bob Casey came through to visit the Pride festivities. And so thank you to all of our elected officials, not only for the Borough of Phoenixville, but all of those in Chester County that came to support and be with us this last weekend. Coming up on the fifteenth, we do, the Community Coalition is having their annual scavenger hunt. You can visit their website, Community Coalition. They actually support five nonprofit organizations within the Borough of Phoenixville. On the sixteenth, we will have in downtown the celebration of Juneteenth. That's in the afternoon. We would encourage you, anyone who's around, just another great event. It's gonna be a beautiful weekend here in Phoenixville. Come out and celebrate Juneteenth with us. Of course, the nineteenth of June, Wednesday, will be the actual celebration of Juneteenth, but we will be celebrating together on Sunday, the sixteenth. And then on the twenty-second, Delaware Valley Veg will be hosting the annual dinner on Vert. You can check out their Facebook page to learn more. Outside of that, thank you all so much to all of those who are enjoying their summer so far. We hope that you continue to enjoy and have a very safe and pleasant summer. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the update, Mayor Urschler. With that, we'll move into new business, section nine of tonight's agenda. Mr. Moore, do we have a motion?
Yes, it is with great pleasure that I'd like to make a motion to award the Maury Road Realignment Project Contract to Construction Master Services LLC for a base bid in the amount of one million, eight hundred four thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents, and alternate bid number one in the amount of one hundred thousand, five hundred forty dollars, for a total bid amount of one million, nine hundred five thousand, five hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents as the lowest responsible bidder, as recommended by the borough engineer.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Carmonito. Questions on this motion?
I just wanted to ask if how, in terms of, now that we're at the bid, how much against our original estimate for this project? I mean, how, how close are we? Do we, do we have, are we fully covered and so forth?
We will wind up using some of the ARPA funding for this. We're about six hundred thousand dollars higher than what we anticipated it was going to be. That's really not a surprise, because we got further into the season than we really wanted to. We really wanted to have these bids earlier in the year due to issues with utilities and things that I've discussed previously that carried us into a less competitive timeframe, and those costs gets escalated. But we, we will be using ARPA funding to make up the difference.
And broadly speaking, when would we have a schedule in terms of major milestones?
We will give a notice to proceed tomorrow. And then we have some dialogue that we have to work with this firm. None of us have worked with this firm before, so we have to go through that. We'll have a pre-construction meeting. We've been in contact with SEPTA. We've been in contact with PICO, both PICO Gas and PICO Electric. Once we know of a schedule, we'll reach out to the residents in the area, French Creek Townhomes, North Ridge, West Ridge, et cetera. We anticipate this will be a complete closure, so that way we can get in and out. Our goal is to be over and done with before the Firebird Festival, which is in early December. So a fast and furious schedule. Our first utility timeframe right now is targeted for, towards the end of July on the electric side. We don't have yet a gas, but those have to come into play before we can do some of the things that we need to. Lot of coordination.
So there'll be school bus routes through there as well, I guess, that will have to be addressed.
We'll have to work through that part.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I thank you again for all of your perseverance on this. You know, it's been a passion project of mine. I'm glad we're here and looking forward to, looking forward to having it done. I certainly have a lot of interaction with people in West Ridge where I live. We're like, when are we gonna do something about it? Even somebody Saturday, I got, said, when is somebody gonna fix all the potholes of Maury? I'm like, Tuesday night, tune in. And, because I have an answer for you. So anyways, thank you again.
I mean, so as council, we have lots of projects that we're always pursuing, but I think, or we have lots of good ideas that we're always thinking about. But it takes a champion for every project to actually succeed. And Mr. Moore, you've been the champion on this. So I'm glad that you've been the squeaky wheel, making sure that this doesn't come off the agenda. And it is a great improvement that will cause a little bit more heartache before the end of the year, I'm sure. But good work on all, so. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Kirk?
Yeah, if I may, if we could get an explanation of the scope of the work as far as sidewalks?
Yes, so from French Creek Townhomes, which is right at where Needle is at, we'll be coming down the creek side of the road with sidewalks. The sidewalks will go to the, where West Ridge is at, and there'll be a crosswalk going over to North Ridge. We will be making a signalized notification for the Schuylkill River Trail along there. We will be upgrading the stormwater management, relocating some underground gas lines, relocating above-ground power lines. We will, the scope of the major construction, we'll put that sidewalk in to the West Ridge location. And then as part of that, realizing that, you know, we have just a little bit further to go. That was the alternate bid number one. We will scratch and resurface from North Ridge, West Ridge location out to Township Line Road. So it'll be a smooth, complete paving from the top at Needle all the way out to Township Line Road.
But there will be a sidewalk from Needle to the trail.
Yes.
Is the closure gonna, how long is the closure? The entire length of construction?
We actually won't know. We anticipate that, we anticipate it's gonna be a significant amount of time, but we won't know until after we have the pre-con, because there's a lot of coordination with the utilities. But in the interest of trying to get it done in one fell swoop, we do not want to go into twenty twenty-five, if at all possible. So we're gonna do everything we can, and that, including closing the road. There will be some accessibility opportunities to get in and out of veterans as we work through that. But generally speaking, general traffic considerations, it'll be closed.
Great. Yeah, I just wanted to add too, I used to live on this side of town, and it's a significant improvement for the residents in that area. So very excited to see this finally coming, coming to fruition. And thank you, Mr. Moore, for keeping it moving. Yeah, one of the things that Mr. Krack has shared with me and also Brian Watson, that this road was never properly built. So it's like a, a country road that had like overlays on it. So the part of the reason it has to be shut down is it has to be fully rebuilt to be proper, to be a proper road. And, and also, you know, the straightening out, but yeah. It's gonna be so great to have walkability. I mean, there's a couple, several thousand people between just North Ridge, West Ridge, and French Creek Homes who can't quite walk to the trail and walk into town. And we will fix that, and that's, that's a major goal. So looking forward to it. Do I urge my council fellow council members to approve? Even with the six hundred thousand extra out of the ARPA funds.
It's a good use of ARPA. Any other questions or comments on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. I inadvertently missed section eight of the agenda appointments. We did not have any appointments tonight, but any members of the public, we do have vacancies existing on civil service, human relations, entry advisory. So reach out to your councilperson. We can't have all these boards and committees without members of the public taking part. So if you're interested, please reach out to staff or your councilperson. We'll happily walk you through the process. It is painless. Sorry for skipping that in the agenda there. Moving back to the new business, under section B, we have a motion here to consider.
I'll make a motion to approve the settlement agreement of the assessment appeal matter identified as Chester County Court of Please, docket number two-three-dash-zero-nine-three-five-three-dash-AB between Phoenixville Hospital LLC and the Chester County Board of Assessment Appeals, the Phoenixville School District, and the Borough, establishing agreed property valuation for real estate taxation purposes.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this motion?
I can give a quick background. So as the public may know, there's been an ongoing dispute about the real estate taxes associated with the Phoenixville Hospital property located at one forty Nut Road. Throughout the process, we have followed the school district's lead since they received the lion's share of the real estate tax assessment money. For the years twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-one, the court's found in the favor of the district and the borough. And the Phoenixville Hospital has since appealed their subsequent real estate tax assessments as to both value and exempt status. While the exempt status litigation remains active, this settlement would come to, would allow for an agreed value of the property in the amount of sixty-seven point one million, which relates to an annual assessment value of twenty-four million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. The Borough and Chester County Board of Assessment are both also parties to the litigation, so we must agree to any settlement. And after speaking with council for the district and discussing it with borough manager, it is my recommendation that council approves this proposed settlement.
Questions from council? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. On tonight's agenda, we have section ten, public hearings. We do not have any public hearings scheduled tonight, so we'll move on to section eleven with resolutions and ordinances. We have one motion to consider adopting tonight for part seven, Peddlers' transient retailers, handbills, advertising, and banners. What is council's pleasure for this duly advertised ordinance amendment?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending chapter thirteen, licenses, part seven, peddlers, transient, realtors, handbills, advertising, and banners.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Strenfeld. Questions on this item?
I do have a question for the solicitor.
Start with Mr. Moore.
Does this ordinance cover political solicitation, that is canvassing?
Yes, it should. So the borough cannot prohibit peddling, soliciting, canvassing, that type of thing, because it's protected by the First Amendment, by the freedom of speech. However, we can put reasonable regulations around it, and looking at our current ordinance, it needed to be updated based on the time periods that have been shown in case law to be appropriate. So, so that's what we're doing. And to restrict speech based on whether it's political, or, you know, in a lot of cases, it's people trying to sell things, that makes it content-based regulations. So this really applies across the board.
So that also means that political canvassing is not approved by ordinance on Sundays, based upon what I'm reading here. Is that correct?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay. And do you need a license or a permit to do it?
I believe the ordinance does require a license.
Not for, not for political purposes.
Oh. Okay, but not for political purposes, correct. For commercial purposes, you need a license. And we're not changing any of that. This is simply to change the hours per what's reflected in the case law.
Thank you. I was just connecting a few dots I hadn't connected before. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. President, if I may, yeah, the, the hour, so that's why the hours have been changed from nine AM to nine PM? Because that's consistent with case law?
Yes, that's correct.
Because that seems, I mean, half of the year, I, I can see six PM, but then it's dark after six o'clock at night.
Yeah, so the case law basically reflects that someone who's looking to engage in freedom of speech needs to have a reasonable opportunity to reach people when they're not at work. So the case law has shown that nine o'clock's about as early as you can restrict it.
I don't know, that, that seems late to me, especially, I mean, the past week or so, there've been issues with solicitors in East Whiteland Township, and I think in Springfield, Delco, if I'm not mistaken, where they, you know, become aggressive. And, you know, and also appearing at later hours, not after nine o'clock, but certainly after five or six o'clock. And I don't know, this just, I, I hear what case law says, but nobody wants somebody knocking on your door at seven thirty on a, on a, at seven thirty at night in February or December. And not only that, I mean, I've had solicitors come to my house. Has anyone had a solicitor come to their house who's actually had a permit? I've, I've never had one. All those solicitors I've had come to my house, they've never had permits, so. Which, you know, I guess, I guess this doesn't apply to me. Which, you know, I guess, I guess this doesn't apply to me since they don't get permits to go up on Ann Street, but then I can just tell them, get the hell out of here. But I don't, I still don't like, I don't like going to 9 o'clock at night. I really think that's excessive. And I think that's, that's a security concern for people, for some people too, especially when it's dark. And the thing about Sunday, so there's no political solicitation on Sunday? Is that what this says?
Yeah, it has, we, we cannot regulate speech based on the content of the speech. So.
Right, but.
What applies to commercial enterprises applies to political canvassing as well.
I don't know, Sunday's a big solicitation day, as long as you do it after the, after or before the Eagles game, but. Thank you for answering my questions.
Any other questions or comments on the motion for tonight's ordinance amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries six one. Moving on, go into Section 12, Reports of Committees, Boards, and Commissions. I don't believe there's anything out of harm, Mr. Dugan's not here tonight, so I don't believe there's anything out of harm that wasn't in consent. Mr. Moore, Planning Commission.
Yes, Mr. President, we have one project. I'd like to make a motion.
Before we make a motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Solicitor, if you could explain the project?
Sure. So I believe we have the engineer for the applicant here. So if he'd like to approach the podium, he certainly may. And I'll give a brief background. This application concerns a parcel of land located at 119 Main Street, more particularly identified as Chester County UPI number 15-9-433. The applicant proposes to renovate the existing building to add a third floor, with the ground floor and the first floor remaining commercial slash office spaces, and the existing second floor and newly added third floor each having six residential units. The reconfiguration of the parking lot is also included, as well as the installation of lighting, plantings, and related improvements. After reviewing the project at several meetings, the Planning Commission voted at its May 10th, 2024 meeting, for it is nothing to recommend approval of the application. Mr. Commanda, do you have anything to add?
If you can just step up to the podium, I'm sorry.
Want to make sure everybody at home can hear you.
Joel Commanda with Inland Design. I don't need to add anything unless you guys have specific questions you'd like me to address, or, you know, I'm welcome, I'm happy to give more information, but.
Any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. I do want to open this application up to public comment. Is there anyone here in the room who would like to comment on this application for land Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to make public comment on this application for land development? Please raise your hand if you would.
Mr. Denlinger, I have no raised hands.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Russia Resolution officially conditionally approving the preliminary final subdivision land development plan for development known as 119 Main Street as approved by the Planning, the Planning Commission.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss for the approval of 119 South Main. Questions from council on the motion or for the engineer? Just one question, based on the street address, is this a Zone A property, or is this not Zone A? It is not, okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving down the list, we have Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee, Mr. Kirchner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. There are a few things happening in Schuylkill Township. The Schuylkill Township supervisors have approved, gave conditional approval to the Wawa at the northwest corner of White Horse and Route 23. And also, they have, they've received preliminary plans from Sheets to go Catty Corner to that, where the Royal Bank Building was. It would be a smaller footprint than the original Wawa that was proposed for there. And Sheets would also keep the, the house behind it as a district office. So the Wawa Sheets for is coming, is Ground Zero is going to be out there in Schuylkill Township. And my money's always on Wawa, but we won't get into that. Also, Schuylkill got a $1 million grant to build sidewalks from White Horse Road, the new, where the new Wawa is along Route 23 to the Borough line. So that's, that will greatly improve walkability there. And again, Schuylkill Township, they have a proposal for the Reeves Track, 64 acres, 55 homes. That's near the reservoir there in the township. West Byklein is also, just to mention, they're also considering a bamboo ordinance, which it will be interesting to see how that develops. In fact, that's on the next meeting agenda, PRPC meeting agenda for review, for consistency review. So, so something like that might become a policy. We'll see. That's, that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Rec Board for items presented at Rec Board. We do have all the upcoming scheduling available on our website, unless somebody else wanted to report on, out on that. But all Recreation Department scheduling events, programs, and summer camps is available on the Borough website. So we'll move on to Tree Advisory Commission, Mr. Carmenito.
First up, I'd like to thank the J.C.'s and Bates Landscaping for planting the Dogwood during, the Dogwood Tree during the Dogwood Festival. Great to see that tradition continuing. Other items we talked about, we have new tree removal contractors getting going, so these trees from the removal list being taken down throughout the Borough. If you have any questions about what trees are on that list, it's available on the Borough website. Still waiting an update on the tree inventory from Arborist, which will identify future planting sites and hope to come up with a more robust plan to fill in those planting sites throughout the Borough. And fall planning, we're talking about, we're planning on planting some larger species of trees in Reeves Park. So that's all for Tree Advisory Commission. Next meeting is in July.
Very nice, thank you. Ms. Berkeley with Human Relations Commission.
We do have a vacancy on Human Relations Commission, so any interested parties, please reach out to me. I am the liaison. It would also go through Personnel and Public Safety, anybody interested in those, it would come through that committee. Also, the HRC did get out and about for First Friday. The theme was diversity, so we thought it was appropriate. And just getting out there to let people know that it is a resource, they don't have to take to Facebook to complain about things, or if they have questions about accessibility or, you know, inclusivity, they can use that resource as people to help them navigate those issues within the Borough.
Thank you. And moving on to Council Action referred from Committee, Personnel and Public Safety with Ms. Berkeley.
Yeah, so no action to report out of. We did take our action in the consent agenda, which was related to our continued dedication to restructuring and growing our fire department, so that's why we approved that list. And then, just again, another commercial for anyone interested at home or in the audience in any of those commissions. As you said before, we have civil service, human relations, and tree advisory. And the system is, you would apply, if you need a support with that, certainly reach out to me or another council member. I'm happy to send you the application or walk you through it. It would come to Police and Personnel, or Personnel and Public Safety, sorry, all tab it's diehard. And we would do an informal interview and then it would come here, so just so people are familiar with the process.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moore with Parks Recreation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two items on our last meeting, we had a further conversation with a group called Diversity in Action, which had presented to us a proposal to do some further communications and context setting around our Civil War Centennial Memorial. They basically didn't really have much new to offer. They thought maybe they needed to come to us for another approval, but we had already reviewed this concept with both the Parks and Rec and with council, and expressions of support were made. So we're going to do some further communication with that group about how we might create some context and some further education about some of the details of that, of that monument. And then the other item is, I'd like, so that was that one portion of the meeting. The other main discussion was, and I'd like to make a motion to approve a temporary community event application for the Firebird Festival, the Veterans Park, on Saturday, December 14th, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. Street closure from Maury Road between St. Mary's and North Ridge Drive from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., conditioned upon receipt of all fees and ballot certificate of its insurance. Was recommended by Committee 3-0 with Ms. Berkeley abstaining.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Strenfeld. Questions on the motion for the Firebird Festival TCE?
I'd just like to point out, there was a memo from the staff concerning, there was been some further assessment of the, how to conduct that, that festival. Most of them are fairly consistent. There was, there is however, a plan, the details of which are still going to be worked out, but maybe Police Chief can speak to this. The crowd is kind of at the maximum that we can safely accommodate for that event. And so we're going to need with this year to kind of work with the organizers to do some crowd management and maybe max, you know, create a way to maximize the number of people who attend. I don't know whether Kelly or the chief want to speak.
So in years before, we have worked with the organizers, especially during COVID, where they actually ticketed the event. So they've done that in the past. I think the biggest issue is that we need to make sure that emergency services can get in and out. So the type of crowd control that we've talked through is creating lanes where there are safe exits. Right now, it was just one. And also with the completion of Maury Road and that project, it actually is going to make the entrance wider, which is going to help us. So I think it's just, we talked through it, the committee themselves, our fire chief, chief marshal, Brian Watson, we've all kind of come together and said that this is the best plan that we think that we can, we can do with still creating a safe environment, just because of the massive amount of people. They all come at once, they stay for a good two hours, maybe, and then they all leave at once. So it's really just trying to figure out the safest, the safest way for that to, to be managed.
And obviously, I'm abstaining, so I'm not speaking as a council member, but as a member of the committee, we will, I would caution everybody about the word ticketing because there will be an uproar. But we are working very closely with staff to look at monitoring the crowd. And obviously, if we get to a certain point where it's not safe to admit people, we will have to manage that, and we will be very open to the public about that. I think what's variable about this is weather is very different. This last year, we had beautiful weather. So I think that and the fact that Phoenixville is very much on the map added to the fact that we had record numbers. So, and Borough's Jeff have been great. I think even beyond worrying about the number of people, it's how we controlled the crowd. And that's going to be a very important conversation and very detailed conversation about how we structure things moving forward.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of some of these details that were part of that action memo.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero one. Moving on to Policy Committee, Mr. Carmenito.
All right. Mr. President, first item on the agenda is to, a motion to adopt a resolution supporting Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi-Quintennial America 250 PA.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmenito, second by Mr. Kirchner. Not quite as good as Ms. Dugan delivers it, but.
I looked up how to say it, I have it written phonetically here.
Like a schoolteacher. Not an easy one, though. Any questions on the motion for adopting this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Next item on the agenda, Mr. President, is a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amending Chapter 27, zoning, Part 6, supplemental regulations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmenito, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this motion to advertise?
I have a little bit of background on this one. So this ordinance amendment is to allow occupants of properties in the town center and neighborhood commercial districts to continue to display sandwich board signs on public sidewalk. As you probably know, in order to support our businesses, we in practice have been allowing sandwich board signs on the public sidewalk, but it is technically not permitted under our zoning ordinance. So we realize we want to continue to permit these signs, so this ordinance updates our zoning ordinance to match our practice.
And I appreciate the work on this. I was on the forefront of some of the constituent complaints and dialogue. And I appreciate that we have the ADA in here very clearly, because I think that's something that we will have to go back to reminding folks about. So I appreciate the quick work on this.
Any other questions or comments on the advertising of this ordinance amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Carmenito.
Next item on the agenda is a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amending Chapter 27, zoning, to amend the official zoning map of Borough Phoenixville to rezone 15 properties in the vicinity of, including the existing train line along Schuylkill River to MI Mixed Use Infill District.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmenito, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this item? A little background, Mr. Solicitor.
Yes, so this ordinance is to enact a zoning map amendment, which as Mr. Carmenito said, would rezone properties along the Schuylkill River between French Creek and our sewer plant. This effectively is the eastern boundary of our Town Center District, and the MI Mixed Use Infill District is seen as a good transition from the Town Center District to the RI and other districts. And if you look at our zoning map, we have done this exact thing on the western side of our Town Center District. So this will also, kind of thinking into the future, allow us to more easily modify the district in the event that, you know, we hopefully get a train station, is that, that's kind of the area we expect that it may go. So this, this rezoning was initially discussed by our zoning task force, has a good idea over several of the meetings we've had. And two affected property owners, being the School District and Brook Ventures LLC, requested that the Borough accelerate its consideration of this proposal from the zoning task force as the zoning task force processes probably about 12 months away for the more omnibus zoning ordinance update. So if the, if the ordinance is advertised and authorized for advertisement tonight, all of the affected property owners will receive direct mail notice. There will be public notice advertised in the Post Town Mercury, and we will hold a hearing on the ordinance at a future council meeting to discuss its merits.
Thank you. Questions from council? We have a motion in a second to schedule and advertise. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Anything else, Mr. Carmenito?
The final thing I wanted to add was that at Policy Committee last month, we did discuss at length the fees associated with temporary community events. We had a lengthy discussion. Staff had, has a number of ideas of how to work with organizers to help them minimize the costs and to be creative. And we came to the conclusion that compared to many other municipalities, our fees still are significantly cheaper, and we plan to take no action.
Very good.
And our next policy committee is June 25th at 7:00 p.m.
It was a good discussion, I do appreciate it. With that, ITTS with Mr. Weiss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As always, lots going on. We discussed one of the highlights of the Maury Road project, so beginning to move forward, or at least accepting the bids. And then the other piece that I'd like to draw attention to is hopefully the end of this month, maybe shortly after. of this month, maybe shortly after, we're going to be looking to start the implementation of solar panels on our Borough Hall building. A very exciting step as we continue on our path towards carbon neutrality and being a greener community. Other than that, our next meeting is on the 18th, one week from tonight, at 7:00 PM, and we love visitors. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Again, Ms. Dugan was not able to join us tonight, but out of Finance Committee, there was no action to report, there was not covered within the consent agenda. We will now open up the second and final round of public participation. For any members joining us in the public, if you want to make your way to the podium, we do ask that you sign in and provide your name, whether you're a business owner or resident. And if you're joining us via Zoom, if you'd like to raise your hand digitally, a member of our staff will unmute you, announce your name, and then you can make comment to council and the public. Give this just a moment.
Mr. Ewald, I have no hands raised.
With that, we will close the second and final round of public participation, move on to our second round of communications and council participation. If there's any updates that any council members wanted to bring to the public light that they forgot in the first round, now is your opportunity. Mr. Weiss?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to wish my esteemed colleague, Mr. James Carmenito, a happy birthday. Great way to spend your birthday with, with your best friends here.
It's a big one, too, it's 40.
We'll try to get out of here by 8:15 for you, then. So with that, your stat, in your packets tonight are your staff reports from all of our department heads. One note that we'd just like to make, we do have all of our upcoming meetings printed on the back of the agenda. We do ask, we do encourage participation. Government works best when people are attending the meetings and joining us for these discussions. And then lastly, in the month of June, we had 13 employees of the Borough that have joined us for anniversaries, making up over 166 years of service, with some special highlights of Dennis Heims in our Streets Utility, who's been here 34 years. Everybody's favorite Bobby Sutton has been here 27 years, and Mr. Bulker, a 15-year mark. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
All in favor? We'll see you next month. Thank you very much.